Get three dots means a continuation.
Yeah.
It's like when you run out of space on a page, it's wrapped down to the next page. Is it alphabetical?
Well, I would be after Harvey if it was alphabetical.
No, I would have Sarah's first.
I don't know who did that to you, Harvey. Except they're fired. Kind of like Donald Trump does. You're fired.
This is not wine, this Diet Pepsi.
Oh, stop trying to hide your stuff.
He put the wine in the Diet Pepsi bottle.
I had an elected official that brought in the big 32 ounce.
Yep.
And it was not full of juice or soft drinks or coffee. It was full of something really tasty. And it made her feel very happy as the day went on.
I'm sure. Hey, sometimes during the meetings, I feel like I might need something to help me get through it.
I start with aspirin.
Yeah.
Okay, so we've got Brian.
Everyone.
Hello.
How are you?
Good. How are you?
I see you made it home.
Yeah, I actually just got home about 10 minutes ago.
Very good. Been working on the budget all day long and the budget message, so it's kept me out of trouble.
That is good. Danielle. Well, it's my understanding that Ms. Owens plans on being in the council chambers.
No, that's fine.
Yeah, so.
And Linda is still at the office and is Randy working from his office like he?
That is what they told me before I left about 45 minutes ago, so.
Okay, very good. Do you know if Linda posted our agenda on our website? Because Cardi doesn't believe it's there. That it, and I'm here at home working, so I'm.
It was not on our Facebook page.
Hmm, okay. Okay. You see this down at the bottom? It says raise hand. Down at the bottom on the right hand, I can click on it and raise my hand so I could speak.
Yeah, that's a feature.
I don't remember seeing that the last time we had a Zoom meeting.
If I have everybody muted and they don't have the ability to unmute themselves, then I can have them raise their hand and then I can issue them the ability to to speak.
Okay.
Well, look who's all dressed up.
Hello.
Hello, everyone.
Monique, you're muted.
Can you guys hear me?
Hear you now.
I can hear you now. Cardi, can you hear us?
Yes.
Yeah.
Look at that.
Hey, Elke.
Yeah.
So if you look at your screen, this is on our minutes on demand page. So if somebody were to go there, they would see that Tuesday, April 7th, there's a meeting at 6:00 PM via Zoom.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Now, is Linda joining us via Zoom or is she going to sit back and take minutes just listening to us?
I believe that she is just going to sit in Randy's office and take minutes.
Okay.
Hi, Rich. Okay, I can hear him.
He's on mute. His photo's there, but he's on mute.
There's Randy.
Randy's coming on.
Okay, am I unmuted?
Yeah.
There you go. Hi.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Hey, can someone share their sharing and put the agenda on the screen? There we go. Cool. If you even, if you hit that little icon at the top right where you can copy the link to the document, it's, well, it's right under where it's a login. There's the four arrows, the icon right next to it. Now, to the left, three more. Yeah, the second one, the next one. That one, if you copy that and put it in a tab, it'll give you more real estate on the screen. Just copy that and paste it into a new tab. Yeah. You can see more at once, son.
Is it just me? Like, I don't see anyone now. I just see the agenda up there.
No, I see everybody. I see you, Sarah.
I don't, yeah, I, I don't know what happened, but, oh, there we go. Got it now.
That's me. If I take over everything and I show the agenda, then typically you'll lose the ability to see everyone else. Depending on your.
Are you, are you on your phone again, Sarah?
No, I'm on the computer.
Oh, then you should, there should just be a button to click where it switches between the views.
Yeah, I got it. I got it up here now.
Well, he stopped sharing the screens, so I think it just went back. Elke, you're muted. Unless she means.
Hey, excuse me, I'm about to start the meeting, 6 o'clock. Okay, everybody, is everybody there? Yep, look like it. Okay. Good evening, everybody. I'm glad everybody is safe. I want to call to order the East Point City Council Special Meeting on Tuesday, April 7, 2020, at 6:00 PM. Please call the roll.
Also, member Baker.
Here.
Council member Curly.
Here.
Council member DeMonaco.
Here.
Council member Lucido.
Here.
And Mayor Owens.
Here. I will be opening up the hearing of the public. Would anybody like to speak at this time? We have anybody there?
Well, see. Mayor, I think everybody's muted, so if if someone wants to speak, they need to hit the reactions thing at the bottom and raise their hand, or maybe they can put something in the chat window. I don't think.
Anybody? Okay, everybody here, Councilman DeMonaco, you have those choices to raise your hand. Or if you are on mute, unmute yourself so we can hear you at this time. Saying none, the hearing of the public is closed. Okay, we're going to go to new business. I want to add to the agenda from website uses for the city of East Point's website. As item, I think that's H, I believe.
Sorry, what was that, Mayor?
The use of the city's website. In the case of a crisis.
We, we can't add items to the special meeting.
Yes, we can.
If I could.
Mr. Aubrey, can you speak on this?
Yeah, the, the bylaws of the East City Council state that with regard to special meetings, that with, there needs to be a certain notice with regard to those. Let me just read the section right here. The agenda shall be posted in a promissive municipal building at least 18 hours prior to any such meeting. The city manager shall prepare an agenda of business to present such mean the notice that such means setting forth the time and purpose together with the agenda shall be served personally on each of the council or left at his or her usual place of residence by the Secretary of Council or his or her designated employee. And with regard to special meetings, those, those item agendas do have to be published on the agenda. Now, the council bylaws does provide that the council, majority of the council may pass a motion to amend or suspend the rules temporarily. So if that took place this evening and there was a majority vote on council to suspend the rules to allow an agenda item to be added, that could be added, but only under those circumstances.
Oh, I would like to add for the use of website uses for the city of East Point.
You were breaking up when you said that. Would you repeat that or?
Yes, sir. I want to add an item to the agenda. And that item is the use of the city's website.
Use of the city's website.
Yes.
Use though.
Well, well, so we need, we need a motion to suspend that part of the bylaws first then, and then be able to add agenda items.
That's, that's correct. The city bylaws, city council bylaws do indicate that no business shall be transacted at any special meeting of council except that stated in the notice of meeting. So that is one of the bylaws. It's actually section 2-21A3 under subsection special meetings. So if one of either the mayor or one of the council members wish to add something to this evening's special meeting agenda, which wasn't previously published, then there would need to be a majority vote on council to temporarily suspend the rules.
And so I want the motion to add the agenda, the use of the city's website in a time of the crisis. I can't hear you.
So we want to add H to suspend the, to susp- temporarily suspend the bylaws.
That's for tonight's meeting.
Yes, as I said, so A, H would be, I'm just, just trying to clarify this. H would be temporary, suspend the bylaws for tonight's meeting in regards to adding an agenda items. And then I would be use of city website.
Yeah, use of the city's website in a time of a crisis. Because that's what we're in right now.
Okay. So just wanted to clarify that I had both agenda items, correct?
Okay. And so that has to be, you said it has to be motion, right? Aubrey?
Yes, there would have to be a motion, a second, and the motion would have to pass in order to add an agenda item to this evening's special meeting agenda.
Okay. The motion up there cannot do. Is anybody going to support it or go forward? Saying none of this use of the city's website during a crisis that has been turned down going to item B, the ratification of resolution number 1902, rescheduling a special election previously scheduled for August 4, 2020. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, it might be my phone near this. I'm sorry. For the.
I can hear you.
Okay, for the purpose of electing a successor to Mayor Monique Owen's unexpired city council term seat.
Madam Mayor, I motion to ratify resolution number 1902, rescheduling a special election previously scheduled for August 4, 2020 to November 3, 2020, for the purpose of electing a successor to Mayor Monique Owens' unexpired city council term seat.
Of course.
Move and support it. Please call the roll.
Mayor, I just had one quick comment.
Yes, sir.
The only reason I had brought this up since we did vote on this at our last meeting was essentially for the reason we were just discussing about the council bylaws. It was not listed on the agenda for the meeting, so I just wanted to make sure that we were following the bylaws and we added it to this agenda and we're essentially just, we have the same resolution in front of us as last time and are now voting on it. And just one point of inquiry, can everybody mute when they're not talking? Somebody has feedback. I don't know who it is, but if people can mute or get things away from their microphone while they're talking, that'd be good. There's, there's usually not this much feedback on a Zoom session. Okay, appreciate that. And that's all, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. We have a motion and it was moved. Can you please call the roll?
Councilperson Lucido.
Yes.
Councilperson Curly.
Yes.
Councilperson Baker.
I'm staying.
Councilperson DeMonaco.
No.
Mayor Owens.
Yes. Moving along to item number B, the extension of water bills due dates.
Madam Mayor, I motion to waive penalty and interest for the May 2020 water bill due date.
Support.
Move and support it. Please call the roll.
Wait, I had a quick question for the city manager on that one, Mayor. Um, were we, were we sending out bills as usual? Or there was possibly discussion on adjusting? That looks like we'll be in quarantine, of course, more than just one month. I was just curious on that end. You're muted, Elke.
I can address the water bill. The water bill for April did go out. It went to the printer yesterday afternoon. It will probably hit mailboxes this weekend. The May bill will go out normal, at a normal time.
Okay.
And if I may at this point, because I did mute, we have our March bill that is not due until April 30. We anticipate that the governor will extend the emergency order through April 30. So we may, you may wish to consider extending that March bill until we reopen, which we're certainly hoping in the beginning of May, but no one really knows. Our April bills, as Randy said, they're going out a little bit late because we had limited staff and trying to get that out. So we would request that you consider delayed due date on the April bills, perhaps with the May bills. By May 21st, we certainly hope that we're all back up to speed. So it's a couple of considerations. March is bill. We know we have a lot of people who pay cash, and if we're not open to take their cash, that puts them in a position of hardship. And then also the April bill and May bill. We certainly can, and Randy can speak to this a little more. We've discussed it. How long we may be able to hold off without penalty and without causing any financial difficulty for the unpaid water bills. Randy, if you could step in just a little bit and share about where we stand with unpaid water bills?
Yeah, I mean, even with the shutdown, we're still getting the majority of people paying the bills or just using the Dropbox or the US Postal Service, which is fairly normal. It's the people that pay with cash that just can't come in here and make payments. I don't plan on rolling any delinquent water onto taxes for the July bill just because I don't think we'll be open soon enough for people to get in here and get caught up. I think we will see. It won't be, it won't be cash shortfall, but we will be tight on cash in the water sewer fund until we get to the December timeframe where we put delinquent water back on there. But we will, we should be okay through December. I'm not, I'm not concerned about that at this point.
I'll amend my emotion to add that all late fees and penalties are waived to June 1st for March, April, and May water bills. We can always add more time later, I figure, if we need to.
Right.
I'll support that.
Thank you. Move and support it. Please call the roll.
All right, so the motioner and supporter are now Lucido and DeMonaco. So councilperson Lucido.
Yes.
Councilperson DeMonaco.
Yes.
Councilperson Baker.
Yes.
Councilperson Curly.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes. Next item on the agenda is discussion on working from home, and this was brought to you by Councilman DeMonaco. Please, Mr. DeMonaco.
Sure, thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to put this on the agenda just so that we could all be on the same page on city councils, well as anyone from the public listening, just to have an idea what the city is doing during the pandemic here, just how we're adjusting things. Of course, many are working from home, but of course, we have, you know, police, fire, and DPW that of course can't work from home. You can't fight a fire from home. And I was hoping we could just review just at a somewhat high level, just, just where we're at right now in the city.
I'd be happy to step in at that point if, if that's all right, Mayor.
Yes, please.
Okay. What we have is, as this pandemic is increasing in the Detroit metro area, we're practicing some really cautious methods. At first, we, we laid off our part-time folks. We are using FEMA grant money to pay them for two weeks. We will pay them first, and then we will be reimbursed by FEMA. Our full-time employees have a combination of adjusted schedules. Some people are working in the morning, some in the afternoon. We have alternating days. Public works were concerned, so we have set a temporary rule in place that there to be one person per vehicle. We don't, we want to keep the six-foot distancing. And you may see them out and about. We've had some questions about public works more than we do police and fire. And they are considered essential, a department and essential workers by the governor of Michigan. So we're still practicing very safe, you know, opportunities for them to work and take care of our business and fill those potholes, mark the sidewalks, because we do have contracts coming up that we need to have a certain amount of work done so that we can go forward to our spring and summer contracts, whether it's pouring cement, whether it's road reconstruction or work. And you will also, our residents will see that our public works are out for emergencies. Many of you are aware that we had, it's not us, it's a contractor who hit a gas line on Nine Mile Road. And it brought just about all of our employees out to, you know, for the safety of the community and keep people redirected. So they are there on emergency, but when they're not on emergency, they're working alternate days. In City Hall, we are sending people home who have the ability to work from their computers and work at home. I can say that I've worked at home all day today, working on the budget. Brian and I are trying to alternate. We're, we're trying to give each other a little bit of distance there and keep people apart, but still keep the operations flowing. Many of our employees now are going to go on a Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday schedule. We do have a few. We're, we're very flexible. We're working with families, we're working with people who have kids at home whose spouses have alternating schedules, so we're being very flexible and trying to, we are a little bit limping, but not really too much. We're getting the business accomplished of the city. It's just we may not be quite as fast as we typically are. And we've got a, you know, an election coming up, so our clerks are working. We have the water bills to send out, so Randy's folks were working. And of course, payroll must go on. The bills must be paid. Mail must be collected and the bills must go out. And so for those of you who are joining in, who may watch this at a later date, I've seen questions on Facebook regarding getting their bills, getting the mail. Things are all running a little bit slower. I know the post office has people that they're, you know, that they're not running at full schedule, so you may not get what we send out to you right away. But take comfort, and I will post on Facebook tomorrow letting people know what your decision was tonight about the water bills, also letting them know that with the, you know, flexible hours and a little bit limiting people from exposure to one another has just made us a little bit slower than we typically would be. But our, our number one goal is safety. No one can use lunchrooms together. People have to go eat somewhere else. And we discourage the sharing of food and the sharing of anything else, and we're looking forward to getting through this. Our, our biggest concerns right now, and we certainly know that those of you at home who are watching this meeting, and I see all of you on here, thank you all for joining us, is our police and fire. They are exposed on a daily basis. And they cannot say no. They have to go out if they're, you know, emergency responders. They have to be out in every situation. And so it's extremely important that we focus a lot of our resources on them to keep them very safe and get them the mask that they need, the gloves that they need, and also limit their exposure. So it's been a trying time for us, but I think we're coming through very well. And the reason we are is because we have such a good team. And we're all working together for the good of the city, as you are also all together. We're, we're doing the best we can under these circumstances. And if you have any more questions or anything more specific, by all means, please ask.
Thanks, Elke. So I, the library, right, was doing virtual programming? I think I saw that.
Yes, the library is going to engage in virtual programming. They are very itchy to get back to work. And they don't like being without their library and their books, and they're very dedicated people. So they are going to start the storytime hours for different ages. And they also would like to alternate their schedules to be able to come in and do some projects that they may have around the library while it's still closed. Keep in mind for those, for us and for those who might be listening, that if the governor does extend the emergency order beyond April 14th, as we expect she will, it will most likely impact the library. And so that's difficult for our librarians because they want people to come in and they want them to join. So they're working out strategies to be able to interact with the community as best as they can during these times.
Thanks. And then I just wanted to ask about building and code enforcement. So everybody is aware of how they're interacting also.
I'll have Mary address that. I believe, is Mary on? Let's see. See, where's Mary?
She marries iPad, I see.
Could be. Mary's iPad.
Couple without names here, too.
She's, yeah, she's incognito. Unmute.
Do we need?
Brian, are you able to unmute? Mary, are you there, Mary?
Yes, I am.
Okay, Cardi had a question for you, so I won't repeat, but I'll, I'd like you to share a little bit about your department. Cardi, if you would, one more time, please.
Yeah, I'm happy. I was listening to the question.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah. We, we are working in a, a limited number of employees coming in. I have the clerks coming in a couple of days a week catching up on permit issuance and bill paying and processing of invoices. I've been in the office. Through our website, we can issue permits online. We are only scheduling inspections that are of a critical nature. And that's been pretty limited. We haven't got a lot of requests for inspections. We are doing plan review in the office. We have that new Aaron Park that's going to be seeking a permit in the next several weeks or in the next couple of weeks. That's over on the Deerfield property. And we have suspended. And we have suspended all rental inspections, and we have suspended code enforcement.
Okay, so, yeah, so then I guess my, I, yeah, resident reached out to a couple of us on council, and so then just code enforcements. We, we can't do any code enforcement, even if you don't need to interact with others, I guess. I understand some things obviously are not of high enough priority to worry about during the pandemic, but others that are maybe more basic where we could just try to, you know, if there's trash all over a property or something like that, is there something we can do to, without interacting directly with someone, to try and do something about that?
Yeah, and certainly, I mean, we could, we could bring in code enforcement officers and do some patrolling around the city and, and respond to complaints. I've gotten a few of them through our citizens' requests for action, which is a program through our website where the residents and citizens can submit complaints. I've responded to a few. I mean, if it's a minimal number of them, I can continue, I've responded to, like I said, several of them. I can continue to respond to them. If it gets to be more than that, we can look at bringing in part-time code enforcement again.
Okay.
Also, coming up with our, our season where we start enforcing grass cutting, and, and that's an issue that, you know, we usually, obviously, we'll wait till the grass starts growing, and I don't know that has so much yet. We're probably two weeks off of, from that right now.
And I've seen mixed messaging on that also. So the city Sinclair Shores posted that it's fine for landscapers to come cut your grass, but then I've heard differently from other officials. I'd assume, as long as you're social distancing, be fine to, I mean, we're gonna need to cut grass eventually. I mean, we can't let it, of course, get a foot long, and obviously, our situation's not any different than the rest of the state.
Yeah, I heard on.
Right now.
I heard on the news tonight at 6:00 PM news that the governor declared that that was not an emergency activity and should not be done, landscaping.
Seems strange. We're gonna eventually need to do that. I think we're gonna be in quarantine for, you know, even the end of April. Lawns are gonna be out of control.
They will be.
Ms. Van Heren, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Can you let the residents know how they can go to the citizens' request for action? How would they do that?
Yeah, on our website is a, a symbol or a button, if you will, that says, I'd have to look at it again, have it in front of me to know, but it, it, it's pretty clear that it's, you know, for submitting complaints or code enforcement issues to the city. And it's a form that they fill out, they follow, you know, the, from one screen to the next and put in their information, and it comes directly to me. I see all of them, and then they get distributed to the code enforcement officer. But I have been reviewing them as they come in, and, and like I said, some that were of a more serious nature, I was addressing with the property owners to get them corrected.
Okay. Now, how are, just tapping in on what Councilman DeMonaco said, how are you more enforcing the businesses that have trash, particularly gloves and masks that are possibly, that can be contaminated, that can increase the spread of this virus? How are you attacking that?
We are not approaching that at all.
I would like you to. How can we move forward in doing that?
I suppose we can bring in code enforcement that would patrol commercial properties and look for trash and debris scattered about, litter scattered about the exterior of the buildings. And I guess it would, you know, to get it done most efficiently, stop in and talk to the business owner and let them know that they're responsible for patrolling the outside on a daily basis and cleaning up the, the, you know, litter and debris.
I would like to start that immediately. Make sure that all of the staff that does do that have a mask and glove on. I wish that would have been done a little bit earlier, but we need to enforce that immediately as far as making sure that they are doing that, because we don't want to spread it. Our numbers are already high, our cases are high, and we need to do whatever we need to do and can do to slow down or, or stop it from spreading in the city of East Point.
We'll certainly do that, Mayor.
Yes, yeah. Now with the grass and things like that, that's not a concern right now. People stand aside. I agree with the governor. If she says that's not essential, people's grass being cut is not important right now in the city of East Point. It's about saving lives. Anything else, Councilman, so we can move forward?
No, I think that covered all of our departments, and yeah, I think Ms. Van Heren and Ms. Doom can discuss building and code enforcement.
Sorry, as a, as since this is an emergency and it's a crisis, I have the ability to have them move forward with certain things in an emergency, and since this is an emergency, some things we just don't go forward with. We're trying to move forward and decrease the numbers of cases, and that's one, one way we're gonna do that. So we're gonna go turn this item, item B, the bid award promoting and lawn maintenance services.
Madam Mayor, I would make a motion to table the bid award for mowing and lawn maintenance services till our next regular meeting of April 21st, 2020, 2021, or yeah, 2020, sorry.
I want to know, I just want to ask why, Ms. Lucido.
So I've received some information today that I had requested, and I was able to look at it, but I do have some questions probably coming out of that, and there was a couple other things that I wanted to clarify before we would move ahead with awarding this thing.
Understood. We have a motion and.
I'll support that motion. I'll support it.
I think you would support that, Councilman DeMonaco, I believe, right?
Yeah, and I, I had a couple reasons too, because that, yeah, I wanted to know what that, the 210,000 in savings, how we came up with that. And then also, we do have a living wage ordinance in the city, and looking at these numbers from Reno's landscaping, I don't know how they could possibly pay people living wage and, and get things done. They'd have to be in and out of City Hall in like 15 or 20 minutes. The, the numbers are wildly different in the bid, but yeah, we could get some answers to that by next meeting, I'm sure.
Okay, thank you so much.
I'm sorry, this is Brian Fairbrother. Are we comfortable not having the grass cut until May? Anywhere in the city of East Point, so that would include city buildings, medians, any type of vendor-managed code enforcement, parks, tax-reverted homes, and the DDA?
According to the governor, we can't cut lawns right now, even.
That's what I was gonna say.
Yeah, it's not essential.
Okay.
Okay, I have a motion to table this and support. Please call the roll.
Councilperson Lucido?
Yes.
Councilperson DeMonaco?
Yes.
Councilperson Baker?
No.
Councilperson Curly?
Yes.
And Mayor Owens.
Yes. Moving forward is the bid award 2020 through 2024, the Cross Connection Control Program and Data Management Services.
Sure, Mayor, I'll move. We award the bid for the 2020 to 2024 Cross Connection Control Program and Data Management Services to H2O Compliance Services Incorporated, Peel Box 338, Owasso, Michigan. I mean, let me finish it first, Councilman Curly. 48867, an offer to the manager to execute all necessary documents related to this bid award. I'm done now. You still seconding it, Councilman Curly?
Councilman Curly, is that support?
Maybe it's not.
Yeah, I'm, I'm ready. I'll support it.
Yes, sir. Thank you. It's been moved and supported. Call the roll, please.
Councilperson DeMonaco?
Yes.
Councilperson Curly?
Yes.
Councilperson Baker?
Yes.
Councilperson Lucido?
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the extension of dog license fees. Ms. Lucido, want to add this, please? Councilwoman?
Yes, I wanted to add this because of the fact that City Hall is closed, so people who need to renew their dog licenses can't get into City Hall to renew them. So I wanted to make sure that we, you know, made a motion to extend those fees also, like we did with water bills. So I would make a motion to extend payment of dog license fees until June 15th of 2020.
Can I get your support? Someone is talking during it. Can somebody put their phone on mute? We can hear the background of your family talking.
I'll support. Are you able to, to?
I got a mo, I got a motion, and it's been supported. Please call the roll.
Yeah, I'm looking through to see if I can mute whomever this says.
Yeah, thank you.
Somebody here on a Galaxy A10E? Okay, because I'm gonna be muting that one.
Okay.
Mute Mary's iPad, too.
I apologize. There's quite a few people on here, so I gotta go through.
Yeah, thanks to everybody for joining.
Mary's iPad is now muted.
Thank you.
All right. So that was motion by Lucido. Supported by, by Mr. Baker.
Yes.
Councilperson Lucido?
Yes.
Councilperson Baker?
Yes.
Councilperson Curly?
Yes.
Councilperson DeMonaco?
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes, thank you. The next item on the agenda is a social media request that was requested to be on the agenda by Mayor Pro-Town Councilwoman Lucido. Yes, please.
So the, the reason why I wanted to add this agenda item is because I, we don't have a social media, like, a policy in place. So I was wondering if, over the next month or so, if we might be interested, first of all, in scheduling a meeting to maybe discuss a social media policy. And I was thinking that until then, because of everything that's going on, and I know that it's important, and some of us might have information that we want to provide to the public, that we just, you know, put in place that if you want to put something on like our personal Facebook page or our personal website, that we just get an approval of all, from, from council, a majority from council approval, and then we can go ahead and do that. And I know that Mayor Owens had posted a video, and I know that there was a request to put it on our city's Facebook page, which I would be okay with. I just wanted to have that discussion before we went forward with doing anything like that.
Okay. Actually, the motion, I mean, not the motion, but the agenda item I was gonna put was in conjunction to what you were saying. Because during it, during a crisis like other cities have done, even Mayor, Mayor Faust, every city that I know, even outside the state of Michigan, even our own governor has done videos letting the residents know what is going on, what, what is going to be done if you don't do certain things, and other informational resources. I don't, I would like to see that in the city of East Point. We need to be giving out information to the residents, not just on our own personal pages, but practice transparency on our website. And the best way to do it is if it comes from the mayor herself. And so thank you for, that was pretty much what I was just talking about, especially in a crisis like this. Since we don't have a social media policy in place, during a crisis, people need to be informed about what's going on, what they can and cannot do. Everybody does not have access to certain things, and so keeping them updated, because I probably talk to different people and council talks to. I talk to people from Trump administration. I have conferences. And also, certain information that's given to me may not be given to council that the residents may want to know, and I want to give that information to them. And so putting videos in place would be very, very proactive, you know, so.
And I, and I do think that's important, especially for city administration, to be putting something on our Facebook at least once a week and on our website once a week with an update of any new changes, with what the governor's doing and things like that. And I wouldn't want it to be like a regular thing, where we're always posting a ton of stuff, because then it gets repetition. And I would hope that if you did get information from anyone, that you would share it with council before you shared it with the community, just because I think that that is important for us to have that, you know, communication with each other also.
Right, and I believe I've been doing that as well. And I've also shared with council to do their own videos as well to promote the census. So I, I believe that I have reached out to council several times about sharing information with the residents on their own personal pages and et cetera, not just me. The mayor can't do everything. It takes a group, group effort to respond, because people might not all vote on to our website, but you might have more people that know Councilwoman Lucido more than they know me, or et cetera, and et cetera. And you can draw people from your page into the website by giving them information. So I, I believe I have reached out to council several occasions to, you know, practice transparency and giving information out to the, to the residents. And so even with the message that I, I put, that was put together by Ms. Doom herself, helped me with that. Thanks again, Ms. Doom, and also the director for helping me put that message from the mayor together to make sure the numbers and the data was correct. Even anytime that I speak, these numbers are, are always available to the, to the residents as well as council. It's nothing that is hidden, so anything that I have said is open to the public. They can research them themselves. But I just do the legwork and researching it on my own and on a platform where everybody can hear what's said and what's done. And so that's pretty much all that I have to say about that part. Anybody else, counsel?
Sure. So, so Madam Mayor, on this, I, I believe that the executive department of the city should be running the city Facebook page and website. You compared us to the city of Warren. Mayor Faust is the leader of the executive department. He'd be the equal to Ms. Doom in our scenario. That's a strong mayor form over in Warren. He's the one that runs the executive department. That's why he would post things. For East Point, the five of us, you, yourself and the four, the four council people, we're the legislative branch, and we hire Ms. Doom to, to post these sorts of things. And we need to make sure she's on the same page with all our department heads in posting things. We're mentioning this video. In your video, you said that we had already postponed fees for dog licenses, but we just did that during this meeting just now. But you said that in the, in your video a couple of days ago. And I'm also not sure what city program we're partnering with gleaners or with businesses. It sounds like that'd be like, that'd be a great thing for the chamber to do, but I'm not aware. So there's three different things in that video that I'm not familiar with. Or well, one is the dog licenses, and the other two, I'm just, I don't even know what programs those are. I just want to make sure we're on the same page in putting the right information out to our residents and also following what the appropriate responsibilities are amongst all of the leaders of the city.
Understood, Mr. DeMonaco, and you are absolutely right on some issues as far as we're all council, but as mayor in a crisis, I am the leader of that, and that is in our charter. And so saying that, going forward, if you want to talk, to talk about what was in the message, Ms. Doom helped me put that together. Ms. Doom, can you speak upon what Mr. DeMonaco was saying? Also, before you do that, Ms. Doom, gleaners, when they came to the city of East Point, so they give resources, that was something that I reached out to them as far as, as on behalf of the mayor to provide a resource, because a lot of people didn't have food in the city of East Point. And so me partnering up with them to provide a resource, I didn't want it to look like it was just me doing it. I said it was a city, a city event, because it was in the city of East Point. I never want to try to get recognition on anything that I do. I try to do it as a administrative thing, as all of us, because I would like, I would think that you, Mr. DeMonaco, would like to see food given to people who cannot eat. And I've also used that resource in cleaners to provide food, and I did it myself and drove back and forth to a senior building and provided food to over 11 seniors in our community. So again, I do not always, let's say never, want to boost myself up in things that I do. I would hope at council, because I did let council know that cleaners would be here, and no one showed up to support that. And I know everybody is busy and things like that, but when I do things, I would think it would be something of this, you know, a city-wide effort, not the mayor putting on anything. I never want to say Mayor Owens is doing this, Mayor Owens is doing that. I would like to say the administrative leadership team is doing it. And that is why, that was part of the letter, because I know that if the mayor is making. And that is why, that was part of the letter, because I know that if the mayor is making sure people are eating, that you guys will back me up on that. And so, that's why that was in there. Now, as far as the dog, um, dog licensing fees, I would like to give that to the, uh, city manager, who in a crisis assists the mayor when it comes to emergency crisis. The difference is, um, the decisions that are making aren't trying to leave council out, but if you read the charter, when it comes to emergency management, and that's when I stepped in. And so, since city manager Doom has been a mayor before, she has been assisting me in, um, that role, and other elected officials at a higher level, as far as, um, all type of people. Um, so saying that, the letter that was written, Ms. Doom, um, I need to add in there, can you speak on that, please?
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry, can I interrupt real quick? I, I'm sorry, just really quick, I don't think we're talking about the letter that you posted on the city's Facebook page. I think right now we're talking about the video request that you made to be put onto our Facebook page. I don't think we're talking about the letter that, that, uh, was posted a few weeks ago. It was something that came, I think, this week, or la- I think it was this week or that, over the weekend, a video is what we're referring to, just, I just wanted to clarify that.
I know, but, but thank you, I'm thinking Mr. DeMonaco said something about the dog licensing, too.
Yes, because that was in your, in your video, you did mention the dog license, and we had it on the agenda, but in your video that you posted on your Facebook page, you mentioned that we had already waived the dog license fees, and we hadn't actually done that yet. We were doing that tonight, so that's where, what he was asking about, because that had not been done yet, so that's where the confusion.
Well, most of that, what I spoke on was from the message to the mayor that was on the web, that was already on the website. Um, Ms. Doom, did you wanna go speak now?
Oh, I certainly can. Um, the mayor and I talked about sending a message to the community, and worked together on that message, which was posted on our website and on our city, um, Facebook page. And it was talking about the pandemic and the number of cases, um, and, and just sending a really positive message to the community. Uh, now, on the video, I was not able to assist, the mayor had started a video, but I believe she either, um, perhaps either took from that original video or created a second one. And so, that is the one that I was requested to put on our Facebook page, when I say ours, I mean the city's. Um, and, uh, you know, with us not having a policy and with the, uh, four other elected officials weighing in, that was not posted. Uh, it was however posted to the mayor's, Mayor Monique Owen's website, which is a personal one, uh, which she was able to reach out to a lot of people, so there is some confusion there. Um, but I know we have talked about looking at delaying, uh, any penalties and fees on the water bills and uh, dog licenses, and, uh, you are correct, Sarah, that, that was on tonight's agenda. But, uh, and I, I can't speak, but I would say it was most likely enthusiasm in sharing, uh, information that, uh, we're pretty sure was going to happen tonight, it was just a little too premature in that video. But going forward, um, you know, if council, if you all share the videos, whatever you do together, and then, uh, I will take direction from the majority, and I will post whatever the majority of our council, um, asks me to do. So I'm aware also, I, I've spoken in detail with our attorney about, um, rights and responsibilities during an emergency. And, uh, we are at that point, and having also sat in the mayor's seat in the past, I'm well aware of the responsibilities and some of the rights we have during an emergency situation. So, um, I will take my direction and guidance from you as to the, um, website, the city website and the city, um, Facebook page, and we'll go from there.
Well, I had, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Ralph.
Okay, the only thing I, I wanna add in, um, and I think this is just something for all of us. If I'm being quoted as, or I'm being listed as one who part, who took part in a discussion, then I think that would be where I would like to know what discussion I've taken part in, and I think that's fair to anybody. If I say that, uh, any of, of you on council, uh, is in agreement with me about something, I should make sure that I have, you know, reached out to everybody. Um, something was mentioned about the, uh, special gleaners distribution, that was the same night that we had, uh, a special meeting. I found out about it shortly before the meeting, so I know it was said that none of us showed up, but I've been, uh, passing out food at gleaners distributions for over two years, about three years now. So I do, it's a regular thing that I do, it's on the district calendar for all the scheduled pickups. And I just recently, uh, shared a post, uh, because the guy that organizes it at the middle school, uh, emails me directly, along with many others, and, uh, they're doing another special pickup on the fourteenth, so I posted that. But I didn't cite anybody else, I just gave information that I had. So that would be my only thing, be, uh, before I tag anybody else in it, or say that anybody can answer questions about it, um, I would ask you or discuss it with you all before I would do that, and I would just ask for the same courtesy. Um, but, yeah, as far as the, uh, the others, the special pickup, I couldn't be there because I was preparing for our special meeting. Um, and I found out of, about it, uh, I think maybe about an hour or so before our meeting, so I, I think by the time I found out about gleaners, they were already there. So, that, I can't speak for anybody else, but you know, that was me, and I'm sure we were all getting ready for our meeting, so that's all I had on that.
Thank you, Mr. Baker, it wasn't a, um, a back and forth as far as you should have been there, or you wasn't there to make anybody look bad. It was the fact that it was brought up and said it was a citywide thing, and I was telling you why, um, it, I made it look like it was, because I know that you guys would want people to eat in this community, and thank you for the last two years of, you know, being a partner, you know, in a, being a volunteer with gleaners. And so, a lot of people don't know that gleaners comes to the school district on those dates. And so, that is why, um, I called myself, because I didn't know that. And so, again, that's the miscommunication that we have, because if you knew, if you know things about resources for the community, uh, for the community, let us know as well. So, you know, um, if, you know, if we all come together and we know things that's going on in the community, you know, we need to let each other know, so it doesn't look like one person is doing that job by themselves, because me reaching out to gleaners and uh, pat, you know, helping them direct traffic and things like that, even though, uh, I was assisted by the, uh, the police department for making sure everybody was practicing social distancing. It can be a lot when you're doing things on your own, when you have people around you that have that information. So if you have the information about gleaners, if you know anything that's the resources in this community, um, that's going on, let me know. You know, and let, let's talk about it, and let's do it together, um, as council members. And so, I know.
That sounds good.
Yeah, let's do it, you know, but I, I did let, uh, I did let council know before it happened, and not, not saying that, because I let you know, you have to be there, I'm not saying that, but I'm letting you know why it was spoken on, that it was a council thing, it was a community thing, it was a city thing, because I believe everybody in the city of East Point wants people who, uh, don't have food, want to eat, they wanna have seniors eat. So me as the mayor, I, I cover the city and letting people know, you know, that this is a, a city thing, we're a family town, it's, uh, Mayor Owens' town, it's a family town. So whatever I do to make us look good, or to show, uh, community support, it's the whole city. You know, it's not me, it's the city, uh, doing that, so.
I got you, I got you.
Thank you.
Well, yeah, the, the, the gleaners that I've been doing, it's, it's posted publicly on the district calendar, so anybody, because they, they have had to change dates before, but, uh, it's posted on a, on a district calendar, and then the one that's scheduled for the fourteenth, that's at nine thirty, that's a special distribution, and I just got confirmation, and I posted that. Um, and it's been shared, so I've already let people know, but, yeah, so a- anytime there's question, that, you know, once a month, they do it, and it's on the district calendar.
Okay, thank you so much. Uh, I think someone else is about to talk, oh, Councilman Curly, and you're on mute, Councilman.
Can you guys hear me? Oh, there it is, okay. Um, this whole discussion about, you know, what different things different people do is, you know, I do a lot of things too, but, which I don't necessarily have to share with people, and, and I do it because that's what I was instructed to do by, by the Holy Spirit. Uh, I've been in charge of housing a hundred and ten people for thirty-two years at our church. I, I, I don't need to broadtad, broadcast that on, on, on special media or anything like that. Um, you know, this whole thing about, uh, you know, I, I didn't know anything about gleaners either, but who, who made it there, that's great, that's wonderful. Um, but those who didn't make it, that's okay too, because they had things, they had things to do. Um, as far as putting messages on, on, online, um, we do have a, um, chief executive officer that, um, does know and should know, um, everything that's going on, not, not only in the city but in the county. And, um, you know, maybe, maybe we need to have her be doing the up, the updates. Uh, so we know that everything that she says is gonna be, is gonna be correct. But please, let's, let's not keep talking about what I did, and what you did, and what we did, uh. We all do things, and we're all, we all get paid for it. By not by money, but by, by, by the blessings of God. So, I don't think we need to keep talking about what, what we do and what I do.
I only mentioned something because it was said that I didn't show up at something, so I'm just putting, I'm just getting clarity, I'm adding clarity about what I do or why I wasn't somewhere. Had it not been brought up, I would not have said anything about it. But I don't, I've been doing gleaners for a couple years, I've, I don't broadcast that to everybody, I don't do that with a pat on the back, so that's not what my purpose was, in saying anything. Um, my purpose was just saying that, hey, if I'm saying, if it's said that I didn't show up for something to help the community, I don't mind giving a reason why I wasn't there. And that's all I was doing, just for clarity, not for a, look at me, look at me, look at what I'm doing, so. I've never done that, if you didn't know that I was doing it for two and a half years, that should speak volumes about, you know, what my motive is, and it's not for a pat on the back, but it's to help people who are in need.
Absolutely, thank you, um, Councilman Baker. The Holy Spirit is letting me know to go to, uh, Councilman DeMonaco, because I have the Holy Spirit too, and that was going very last. Um, Mr. DeMonaco, did you wanna say anything else? I think.
Sure, sure, yeah, I did, there, there, there was one thing, uh, I wanna make clear here, if, if you do something, Mayor, the mayor did it, not the city, the city only does things if three of us agree on it. Um, if you do something, that's great, I'm not saying we don't wanna do things you're doing, you know, gleaners is great, of course, but if you do something, it's the mayor doing something, not, not, not the city. The city does something if three of us vote in favor of it or more. I just wanna make that one clarification, that's all. So, when you say the city is working with gleaners, or the city's partnering with businesses, maybe that's something you're doing, but that's not what the city's doing, it's what the mayor's doing.
Well, I'll get more clarification with that, um, during the crisis, the emergency crisis with the, um, with our, uh, attorney. Um, moving forward, I think, uh, how did you wanna move forward with this, uh, Ms., uh, Ms. Lucido?
Well, I think at this time, I just would like to maybe, I mean, I can make a motion that for anything that we put on the city's Facebook page from any one of us, five members of council, um, that we need to get, uh, approval from a majority.
Are you making that a, a motion?
I'll make that a motion.
May, may I speak, please?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, would you like to include the website and the Facebook? We typically post on both.
Yeah, I'll include the, the website and Facebook.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so you're, Sarah, uh, repeat your motion again.
I'll, I make a motion to, um, because there's no social media policy in place, and make a motion to if any individual council member or the mayor wants to post something on our Facebook, on the city's Facebook page, or on the city's website, that it has to go to a vote for the majority of council to agree.
Okay, I'll support this.
I'm sorry, motion is supported, please call the roll.
Councilperson Lucido?
Yes.
Councilperson Curly?
Yes.
Councilperson Baker?
You're, you're muted, I think he's on mute.
Oops, sorry about that, I'm gonna abstain from this one right now.
Councilperson DeMonaco?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Mayor, you're muted.
You were muted, we couldn't hear you.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna say, uh, yes to that.
Say what?
Yes, can you hear me?
What did she say?
Yes, she said yes.
She said yes, okay. You were muted, I couldn't hear you.
I'm sorry, okay, um, next item on the agenda is a rolls and bills.
That's the easy one.
See, Mayor, I'll motion to pay the bills in the amount of three million, five hundred sixty-two thousand, seven hundred forty-six dollars and eighty-four cents.
Support.
Okay, I don't know who won on that, I like, uh, Lucido did.
It doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter, definitely, um, we got a motion and definitely support on that, please call the roll.
Councilperson DeMonaco?
Yes.
Councilperson Baker?
Yes.
Councilperson Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilperson Lucido?
Yes.
Thank you, next item is, uh, mayor and council report, starting with, uh, Mayor Pro Tem, Lucido.
Um, first of all, I'd like to thank everyone who joined tonight, um, it's nice to see that even though we all have to stay home, that we have so many names up there, the people who are actually watching our meeting, I, I do appreciate all of you guys, uh, listening. I wanna remind everyone that there is a stay-at-home order, and everyone should try to stay home, I understand if you wanna get out, get some exercise every day, go for a walk around the block, that's all great, but try to social distance yourself. Everyone needs to make sure that is the number one thing that is gonna stop the spread of this terrible virus. I wanna pray for all the sick, I wanna thank all the frontline workers, and that's all I have this evening.
Thank you, that was awesome. I missed your prayer today, that's the only thing I missed today, really, the biggest thing, because you have the best prayers. Um, next is Councilman DeMonaco, please.
Thank you, um, yeah, thanks everyone for joining, there's a lot of members of the community on here, it's great to see that you're coming out and taking part while the pandemic's going on. And, yeah, I'd like to thank everyone for sure on the front lines, police, fire, and DPW, everyone in the city that is working during this pandemic, and of course, everyone else, the nurses, everyone at hospitals, and all that, of course, you know, um, you know, they're doing amazing things right now, and, you know, the rest of us who don't do that, you know, I do software for a living, I'm just trying to stay away from people. So hopefully everyone else that's not, uh, need, that does not need to be on the front lines, is staying at home and staying safe, uh, will eventually get through this, be COVID-nineteen. And, um, yesterday, uh, the Ethics Ad-Hoc Committee had met for the third time, uh, we're working on an ordinance. Uh, I'd like to thank Walter Martin and Gary Lepard, and Councilman Baker, and Mike Kleinfeld, and Mr. Albright for all taking part, everyone has shown up to every meeting. So it's worked very well, um, hoping, uh, shortly, we'll be able to bring something forward to the whole council here as a proposal to update our ethics ordinance. And I'm hoping, since we're able to do this remotely, um, maybe we can start to get some boards and commissions to maybe meet remotely as well. Um, we, uh, I think we're going to be under quarantine for quite some time here, so we probably don't wanna go two or three months without for sure some of our board and commissions, um, and if possible, uh, do them all, we might as well just try some of them out. Uh, maybe we can discuss that a little more next, uh, regular meeting on the twenty-first, and maybe we can start to get more regular agenda items on the meetings too, because I think we're going to be doing this for quite some time. Um, but, uh, yeah, appreciate, I think this is working out really well, and I think we're learning a little more for each of these meetings each time, and uh, appreciate it, Ms. Doom, Mr. Fairbrother for putting all this together, and, uh, just everyone in the city, it's weird times right now, for sure, and um, yeah, just everyone, stay strong, hopefully everyone's families are healthy, and thanks again for showing up to the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. DeMonaco. Um, Councilman Curly, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, we've all, obviously, been watching television, particularly the news, and the news is not good. Uh, the virus is gonna be with us for a long time, uh, more than just two or three weeks. But the prediction is now in the next two weeks, there's gonna be an incredible amount of people that are gonna die in the United States. And, um, I'll say it upfront, my dear friends, that we need to pray. I'm not afraid to talk in public about praying, so. I'm not afraid to talk in public about praying, so if anyone objects to that, then call me. But that's how we can maybe solve this problem, that we need to pray that uh, the, this epidemic and this virus will go away. I did place on um, uh, Facebook about in support of the first responders to put a white ribbon out in front of your house or on your window. Um, it can be anything white, really, that people know what you're talking about and show our support. Uh, uh, of the people who are dying too. So my words closing tonight is, uh, let's pray that uh, we can get through this thing without so many deaths. Amen.
Thank you. Councilman Baker, please.
Uh, yeah, I would like to, uh, well, thank everyone also for attending. Um, hearts go out to those who have lost loved ones uh, during this time. Our condolences, please, uh, we'd like to extend those to you. Um, I've had people near to me lose loved ones and uh, it's something to take serious. So I just hope that everybody is doing what they can to stay safe. Um, take the precautions that you need to uh, stay safe. And um, that's pretty much it. I just, uh, thank you everybody for coming out. Um, prayers for the first responders that have to be out. Uh, pray that they're safe. And uh, that we all get through this hopefully very soon.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Uh, first, before I start going in, I want to first thank God that all of you guys are safe and sound. And also the people who are um, who joined us, I am glad you all are safe and your families are safe. That is so important to me. I also want to thank the first responders, um, not just in our city, but also all around um, the globe for just doing their part. And um, and our frontline people who are uh, going to work every day, making sure we have food and the necessities that we need. To uh, continuously do certain things and feed our families. Um, also, um, I have a couple of announcements. The parks will be uh, definitely closed. Um, starting um, tomorrow, we will be closing all the parks. And um, also the director of public safety and the police department will be issuing out tickets. Or if you see anyone that is not practicing social distancing, we will be issuing out tickets. And if you see people that are having parties or so, big social gatherings at their house, please call the police and let us know. And when you post up on, on Facebook, it's not directly going to the police department. So you have to let us know when you see things that are going against governor's executive orders, let us know. Because we will be going, going very hard and um, and strict on this policy that has been in place. I take it very seriously, the lives of my community and others. And so that will be um, going, hitting very hard. So if you see someone that are in these parks, if the parks are closed, you already know it was closed. So you will be getting a fine starting tomorrow. And also, if you are not practicing social distancing, you will be getting ticketed even at your home. If there's no one at your, if no one at the house lives there, if someone is at the house and that does not live there and it's a numerous amount of people. You will be ticketed starting tomorrow. Um, also, um, just a, a few other things that I want to say is I want to say thank you to uh, Dr. McCloud. Who is the superintendent of schools, who's working with me to make sure the school parks are closed as well. Also, um, I talked to the treasurer, Mr. Rafa today, who is a McCloud County treasurer. So if your home is going into foreclosure, you still have time for your two thousand seventeen uh, payments till May. And if you can't make the complete payment, you have the um, you, you can do a payment plan, actually. So your home in these new times cannot be taken away from you. We do not want people to be out their homes, not at this time and not really ever. Um, also, I talked to the, to Linda from the Chamber of Commerce. She has been working with us as far as getting out to the businesses. To uh, see how we can support our businesses at this hard time. Um, a lot of people are having hardships, especially new businesses and things like that, seeing how we can get to them to uh, in the residence to support our local businesses. So if you know of a local business as in hardship, then let's support our local businesses the best we can by practicing social distancing though. Also, um, I talked to the owner of Fresh Choice and I'll be talking to also all these. We want to, he um, is doing something for the seniors and the police from eight AM to nine AM. They're going to uh, have that time allotted for seniors and the police to go grocery shopping. And we will also want to continuously uh, practice social distancing. So if you are a senior, you are a frontline person, please come to the hours of eight and nine AM. Not saying that after that, you know, um, you, you can't come in and shop. We want to take the time aside so we can give those people um, a chance to get what they need so they can go back to work and go back into their homes. Um, also, thanks, another uh, great shout out to Gleaners for doing their part in the, in every community. Uh, I think somebody noted that Gleaners is not just for East Point and you're absolutely right. Gleaners is for everything, for everybody in the community. And that's why it was not marketed or advertised as just the East Point event. Because we have people that goes to our schools and our churches and live in Detroit, they live in Warren and things like that. And nobody, um, no matter what city you live in, no race or color or title you have, everybody has to eat. So we would never stop people from eating. Um, going forward, I would also like to ask the Arts Commission to uh, produce projects for our city. Um, probably do some arts and crafts on the Arts Commission Facebook page. I know my kids and your kids at home are trying to find something to do. And we have an arts commission here right in the city of East Point. I would like for uh, someone from the Arts Commission to reach out to our community and if they haven't done it already. Um, to do arts and crafts and probably do a Zoom and teach the kids how to do arts and craft. Or have some type of uh, thing where the community can do something, show a shamrock spirit as a family town. We can write a shamrock or something like that, or do some type of arts and craft and share it and post it on a Facebook page. Or you know, put something on their doors or something like that to show that we are a family town and we want to keep moving and we're working together. Also, um, let's talk about the census. The census is very important for those who are on here that live in East Point. Because sometimes you have people joining in, and I live in the city of East Point. Um, those who live in East Point, uh, and you have not done your census, this is very important to me. The COVID nineteen is my top priority, but after this is over, God willing, because it will be soon. We still have to uh, worry about things getting paid in our community. So if you have not done your census, please um, do it today. Do it tomorrow. We're all at home. Please do and tell your neighbor, tell your friend, if you can have people in the community that are listening right now, do a Facebook video. And tell people out in the community um, to do their census. It's important. We do it every ten years. After, after tomorrow or after today, they don't have to do it in ten more years. So please, uh, help me spread this in the community. Um, I need your help um, to do so many things in this community. If you have resources and things like that, please let me know. Let council know, email us, or give, or share on our website. And we want to get better with our website. So we apologize that our website is not up to what it should be. Um, we have a lot of things, a lot of innovative ideas going forward. And hopefully me as your mayor, I can help with some of the ideas and the council can help me with those ideas as well. Um, I'm trying to see what else am I missing? Have a lot of information and I try to give it out as much as possible. And I just want to reiterate to continuously practice social distancing as much as you possibly can. We want to stay home and stay safe. And if you don't see anyone doing that, please let us know. It's important. Our numbers have risen. We are a hundred and ninety-five and that is probably more than that because we are backlog and testing. And it's important that we stick together at this time. So please, practice, stay at home, stay safe, wash your hands. If you opening packages that comes from Amazon or anyplace else, please open them with gloves and then wash your hands. And then discard it with gloves as well. We want you to be safe. We want you to be, um, also, your mental health is important to us. So continuously read, do activities and things like that and call someone and check on them. It's important. Life is short. I have lost over ten people that I personally know from this virus. And it's important that my community is safe. So um, that being said and going forward, I have, I would like a motion to adjourn, please.
Oh, ma'am, ma'am?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Yes.
Thank you. I know this isn't like a, a regular meeting. Um, I just have a, a question and a comment. Mayor, when you said the parks would be closed tomorrow, do you have a certain time?
Um, I want them closed until further notice.
So you want them closed as of midnight tonight or when they open in the morning?
When they open in the morning. They shouldn't open, yeah. So we want them closed.
Okay, and is that until the governor lifts the executive order?
Yes, ma'am. We want to be somewhat in conjunction to what she says and um, be more strict. Because I know East Point was considered a hotspot and we just finally got those numbers in after a week of a storm. Bought so heavily to get those numbers and then they were out the next day. Um, so if we have those numbers and see if we have something to report now to you all in those stats. We have to start strategically working to work, keeping our community safe because every one of you is very important to me. And so um, anything else?
I have the comment. Uh, for those of you who are on our site today. I have posted on our city website, the uh, information as to why the census is important, what it does for the community. It also will give people a link to do it online. It takes all of five minutes, which is how I did mine. And uh, also, there's a phone number that you can call and below, if you read down that link, it's in every single language. There's a, all the known languages. You have separate phone numbers. If you have family members or neighbors who don't speak English, there's a way to get counted in the census and have someone who can speak with you. So please go to our Facebook page and take a look at the um, you know, what I've uploaded on the census and, and please call. Because it makes all the difference. As the mayor said, it makes a difference in money for roads, for schools, for senior lunches, for kids. Um, being counted really puts us uh, in a position of eligibility for a lot of grants and loans. So uh, by filling out that census, you help yourself, the community and you help everyone in your family. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Ms. Doom, I just have one thing.
Yes.
Because the mayor is closing the parks tomorrow morning. The only thing I would ask is that the signs are posted at all the parks before we find people. Because not everyone's going to watch tonight's meeting or go on our Facebook or, because there's a, I know like at Spindler Park, there's a lot of, like seniors that don't have computers.
And it'll take us a little while to.
Walk that park every day. I would hate to, um, you know, I just want to make sure.
To make those signs that quickly. We've got to make them. And so making them and post them, it'll be a while.
Tell them to leave, that's fine. I just don't know if we should take it before it's posted at the parks.
No, I don't think the chief would do that.
The chief wouldn't do that. We had that conversation and if we don't have signs, we can put in the caution tape as well. So uh, what we're going is trying to make sure the numbers go down. We're going to see a peak in the next week or two, especially the holidays are coming up. And so we're not, uh, we're not in the business of making money off of people. That's not what we're trying to do. We're trying to keep people safe and alive. And so.
Right, no, I understand that.
We're not going to just say, oh, you have a hundred dollar fine. That's not how we ever worked in East Point. So those are some of the things I have uh, talked to the director about and he's not in the business and I don't think we're in the business getting people tickets. But we might give people warnings. And so for those who have not seen this, this um, this Zoom meeting or go to council meetings or are aware. They will be uh, given a warning um, indefinitely. Oh, and then, so, so thank you for bringing that up, uh, Councilwoman. So uh, anybody else would like to say anything? Uh, I guess everybody had their report, so I guess we bringing it back again. So anybody else would like to say anything? Okay.
I was just going to say we should uh, post a message then, essentially like, I guess, an executive order stating um, why or how, or well, not why, obviously we know why. Um, uh, closing the parks like on our, our site, if we're, we're doing this, um, we should cite how like a governor's executive order. But mayor's executive order, I guess then, uh, so everybody knows um, how we're doing that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's why I was looking for clarity as to the time and as to the end date. Uh, and then I'll, we'll get those signs made as quickly as we can.
Thank you. And also, um, Ms. Doom, I'm talking to the director. He was saying we have a caution tape, the yellow tape. People might still do what they want to do and go under the tape. We know that, you know, and that is why we want to just make people aware of what's going on. And then uh, you know, we have to, have to do what it takes to save lives. Because right now, we can say, uh, let's do this and let's do that, but until it affects you, and it shouldn't affect you to make it important. We shouldn't have somebody die in our family or close to us to say, okay, let's do this right now. You know, I don't want this done a long time ago, but you know, it hasn't been done, so that's fine. Going forward, let's start, if you guys have, um, council have uh, ideas or strategies to put in place, uh, please let me know. And let's work together moving forward to just uh, get people to stay at home and uh, stay safe. Um, can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
To a mood.
Support.
Support.
Mood is supported. And thanks everyone again for coming out. Please call the roll.
Councilperson Curly?
Yes.
Councilperson Lucido?
Yes.
Councilperson Baker?
Yes.
Councilperson DeMonaco?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes, getting in the adjourn. Thank you, everybody. Be safe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary. Good night, Frank.
What about Oki? Good night, Oki.
Good night, Oki.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Stay home, stay safe.